Call this meeting to order. We'll begin with a brief budget review discussion for FY '21. Starting with item A, approval of FY '20 budget savings of $234,580. I have a few proposals up here, which I don't believe to be too controversial. The first is within the financial impact of the backup materials. You'll see, I'd like to allocate $44,295 from non-tax gaming revenues to one-time equipment replacement costs, spread through general basic and supplemental. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Potabom. Dennis, any comments on that one?
Nope, that will actually reduce general basic and general sub, because we just took the office furniture. We did not take leases or cars. So strictly office equipment.
Yeah, we looked at different blocks, so to speak, of expenses, and the cars would basically wipe out the gaming money for the foreseeable future. And office expenses are one-time, that we can justify with one-time money such as gaming revenue. So, any other discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes three zero. Second recommendation is to allocate $90,285 from gaming revenues to offset and decrease the rural-only tax rate. That's the amount that we need to allocate to promise a reduction in the rural-only rate, which otherwise does not have many one-time expenses that we can allocate towards. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Raddig. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes three zero. Third recommendation is in coordination with budget analyst and human resources. This is to reduce the allocation to the self liability insurance fund and general supplemental by 100,000. That's a decrease of the last year's 1.1 million to $1 million. If you look at the available balance in the fund every same time of the year on February 1, we're obviously, we're obviously in the black there and have comfortable reserves, so to speak, and can justify a reduction of merely 10% or so. Because we're increasing, we don't need money just sitting there, when in the past years it's been fractions of that amount. So, we also have been made aware of human resources renewing certain policies which have certain financial impacts that are positive to, and regarding, you know, deductibles and different things like that, which will help that balance.
Lower liabilities overall.
Lower liability, yes. So, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Raddig. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes three zero. I'm happy to report that with those motions, the countywide and the rural-only tax levies are decreased for the next fiscal year. With that, I included another opportunity for the board to discuss the improvement request from Conservation. This is for one of the three items that they had previously brought forward in the past few years. This is for a naturalist position in the amount of $71,707.33 from general basic. It would still result in a tax decrease overall if approved. At this point, because you're here, is there, are there items you'd like to bring up that you haven't already brought up on this?
Just expand. I brought with me today Dawn Schneider, our Nature Center Director and the E.E. Coordinator for backup, and she's very supportive of this, as we are. And I went back and found a few more numbers for you, real quick, just to show you, from 2016, my previous, my predecessor had them to start tracking those programs and number of people we haven't been able to reach. And it was 92 programs and 10,606 people in the last four years, basically, three and a half that we've been unable to reach. And if Dawn wants to touch on that, she can, a little bit too. So it's been a need for us, and we're happy that you're addressing it and hope that this is, turns out in a positive way.
Thank you for the opportunity. And we, of course, it's not always a finite type of tracking as far as being able to see that, because there's a lot of unmet needs. Just an example, on Saturday, we had a public event at the Nature Center in Teresa Croide, our naturalist did an owl program, and we had 120 people. So the excitement and the interest level is still very high. People clamor and come to our programs. Are they all Woodbury County folks? No. And that's okay, because we are also driving the economy by bringing in more tourists from outside the area. So, I will also add to that fact that we have a lot of unmet needs with our school programming. And we are, we are to our capacity. Obviously, a lot of those numbers are for the coveted time of year that people want to come for field trips. But when we look at our rural school districts, there's a lot of kids that we haven't met in that arena, whether or not it's because the teachers have not requested them, or they request later for a reason of, I don't know why. But usually, our schedule's full by the time they give us a call. So, we're excited to have additional programming with this potential position. And as Dan had indicated at the last meeting, we do have an AmeriCorps naturalist that is grant-funded, which is soft money. So we're, we're very hopeful that we can secure a full-time position to continue to reach the, reach the needs of our community and beyond. Thanks. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
I guess she touched on one thing I just want to follow up on. When I went back after Matthew and I had spoken, and told him that there was a possibility of this position becoming a reality, the first thing Teresa and Dawn both said, we could start focusing on the rural schools more. We'd have more time, because we feel that, like she says, with the big schools inside Sioux City, they call right away, they get on the schedule, and now we're going to have that opportunity to get out into the county and hit those rural schools some more and really push that. And I think that's important, so.
And I haven't changed my mind from last week. I mean, I feel like part of it is our, part of the taxpayer pledge we made on the jail project, or ULC project, is that, you know, we weren't going to look at adding positions. And, you know, I do think a lot of other departments didn't have requests kind of expecting that too. So, that's, I'll vote no, but it's a group decision, so.
I understand.
And I, and I totally understand why you're asking. It's your department, you want it to run as, as good as possible, and I, you know.
And I understand it. It's not like this is the first year. There's been a need that is addressed in our long-range planning every year with the board. And so, and they take that seriously, and we wanted to relay that to you. And it's nice to see that you're hearing, and we appreciate anything you can say.
And I totally appreciate everything the board does, you know, as volunteers and everything, to be a part of it. And they, I mean, the center looks amazing every time we go, and the kids have fun, and so.
Thank you.
Can you speak more about the rural? What would that look like, the rural school operation?
Well, we, we obviously are available for field trips and programming. Many of the districts, they make haul in May wanting a field trip, and we've been booked. Well, actually, our maze was booked already in October for 2020. In 19, it was, the May was pretty well full already. But it would be either entertaining the students coming to the nature center, but we also do a lot of outreach, and we're more than happy to go to the rural districts to their classrooms, or to meet at one of our county parks. And we're set up, in fact, last spring, we did a big field trip at Little Sioux Park with 120 kids from Perry Creek Elementary here in Sioux City. So we can go offside and do a lot of things. We also are looking at some partnerships with the University of Iowa and their School of the Wild. And that accredited school is looking at some outdoor programming and education for students throughout. And we are selected as one of the pilot schools, or pilot counties in the state of a handful of counties, to try and bring more education programs out to the school districts. And so we're exploring that with some of our rural districts. We haven't, we haven't met with the districts yet, but we overall like the concept, and we're excited that we are one of the few pilots to be selected in the state of Iowa.
And I think it'll go hand in hand. This new person, we hope, gets approved, one of their job descriptions and their duties will, to reach out and talk to those rural schools, you know, go to Correctionville, go to Mobile, go to Lot. And try, because there's been a lot of turnover, you know, not everybody knows who Dawn Schneider is anymore. She's been around as long as I have, but there's some new teacher going through that you may not be aware that we have an environmental education program that will come into the school, or that they can come to our nature center. So I think we need to go out there and beat our own drum again, and let them know that we're there, and what we have to offer in the curriculum that we can provide with the naturalists, that can integrate with the teacher's curriculum. And I think that new naturalist, that being one of their duties, is to go out and do that. Because I really do, they talk about wanting to get out in the rural schools, not having enough time. Well, this is our opportunity.
What else can you say about revenue, even if it's in general? Any benefits there, or is this just an awareness sort of position?
As far as school programming, we don't charge, except for out-of-school, out-of-county school districts. But as far as revenue for other programming, we don't, we don't typically charge for programs for the public either, unless there's some type of supply charge that we have. We do have revenue that's generated through our summer day camps. And just last year, we started satellite camps in our county parks as a set kind of programming, and we're excited to springboard and to do more with that, so there is revenue generated that way. And then obviously, we look at the outside income as far as, maybe they're not giving us funding right when they come, but they're seeing our resources, the quality of life we have in Woodbury County with our camping, and our picnic areas, and our hiking, and the nature center, whatever else. And the kids are excited, maybe, especially with those smaller districts, their parents come, chaperones, a lot of chaperones come. The ratio's crazy, how many parents come to students for those smaller school districts. And they'll say, this is cool, we want to come back and bring the families back later for a picnic, or an outing, or camping, or whatever, weekend, who knows? So, that's another, it's an intangible, but it's certainly a way to get our word out and get people to use our resources.
Why do you call it an interpretive naturalist?
Well, that is a phrase as far as interpretation of natural resources. Interpretive naturalist is the professional standard for the
Nationwide.
For the National Association of Interpretation. It's not an interpreting of, interpreting a language, but it's interpreting the nature and natural history.
Environmental education educator might be easier, but this, this environment, you know, has been around for, interpretive naturalist has been around as long as I've been in this. That's a long time.
That wouldn't be much easier to say either, so.
Teacher for nature.
Naturalist.
Anything else we can help you with?
Well, I've been supportive, simply because I hate to see the educational opportunities missed. I think that's why we're there. And I think if we can get more kids in for those educational programs, I think that's, it's hard to even put a price tag on it for me, because that's important to me. And when you see how many programs we weren't able to do, I want to do them.
If we can reach the kids and the quality of life, and get them educated on water quality, everything we do out there, that's things that we're fighting now as adults, all the way up through the state, you know, you look at the water quality we're fighting. If we get the kids to understand that, and they can go home and say, well, Mom, you shouldn't do that, or we should try and recycle, or, you know, the dividends do pay off.
And maybe they'll also, you know, our, my ultimate goal is, is so that they become steward of nature. They know, they learn and appreciate it, they have that knowledge and they love it, so they're going to protect it. And they also might, when they go, we've had numerous people now, because he was talking about age, I'm going to start year 32, I can think of more than a handful of youngsters that came through different programs, that interned, and now they have a professional job in the field. And many of those people potentially want to come back to Woodbury County, because they love our natural resources and the parks and things we have to offer. So, so there's different ways we can, that way as well, and it could be a ripple effect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So some thoughts I have on both sides of the vote. First, I didn't realize other departments had withheld requests this year, and they'd thought that the board wouldn't approve them. We kind of rely on our department heads and trust them to submit items that are, that are needed regardless of how the budget picture looks, or how they think it looks. We're obviously faced with the decision anyway of saying yes or no. So, I don't think the board needs to take responsibility for that, but I am saddened that that may be the case. Against the issue, I can see the jail cost and the obligations the county will have coming up, should certain things happen, where it's, where the notion of adding staff is problematic. I understand that position. On the other side, Dorothy Pico Nature Center is a prime example of, of a place where someone would want to take a field trip. I think it's without equal in our region, as far as a place that provides education and just a place to relax and utilize what taxpayer dollars have already bought and preserved in that area. I think it's a great, great operation overall, and the county's used it even for a conference room, and I'm glad the schools are able to break up their studies with, with programs over there. I, I appreciate the fact that this has been brought up several times, and my motive in bringing it back was to honor the, honor the request at a time where it could be granted, where there is a potential to lower the rate, at the same time, is granting what we can, which from the menu of options, so to speak, was significantly narrowed down, if we consider all of your requests being on the agenda several years. That said, I may have misread the board on the support for this. I also don't like that we're down to three members on this day. There's nothing we can do about that. One of our members had a personal issue to attend to, but I don't like that. The fact of the matter is that the four of us on the board have de facto veto power on this budget. Meaning, when we get to the point where we have public hearings, we do need a, more than a simple majority to pass this budget. So, while I may have to take responsibility for misreading other members on the board and bringing this back, that was my motivation. I will support this at this point, but I need to be upfront that if there is still a member of the board that feels against this, then I will have to remove it so that the budget can pass.
So, just some understanding on that, for person. You could vote on this today, two, three, or if Rocky was here, three, one, if Keith stands by what he's, and that would pass. And you're saying, when you get to your budget, all four have to
We all four have to approve the budget.
Approve for the budget. So, the fact that you don't approve of it on this vote, you would still disapprove on, on the final budget vote?
You know, I'm going to look at overall spending increase, and
And if it lowers, like
That's gonna, I mean, because we're still lowering the levy, but it's not just about the levy, it's about the percentage of spending increase overall as well. You know, some of it is by growth, that we're able to spend more. But, you know, there's kind of an allowable amount that I'm willing to go, and I really don't want to see, like, our general basic grow over 3% or, you know, general sub is right at 3% already, and, but, you know, you look at, like, mental health took a, you know, what, like, 30% jump, and debt levy was a huge jump. And, so our overall spending is, you know, what, $3 million more in last year?
Low on the three.
So, it's a big jump in one year, when you're trying to tell your public that you're going to be as trim on the budget as you can, when you're trying to promote your law enforcement center. You know, I mean, I feel like I'm in a position where if I'm going to keep my word to everybody, it's awfully hard to support any kind of new position. And, you know, I did support Gary's, but, you know, it was like adding like an eighth time to a guy that, you know, is providing life-saving services throughout the county. So, you know, for $5,000. So, it's not really apples to apples, you know.
And I just asked, I was trying to understand the process on, with four versus five.
Sure.
Yeah, and I, I think I
Maybe I misread what you and I had talked about, too.
No, you didn't. No, you didn't. I was just saying, right before what you said, I said the exact same thing you did.
Okay.
I just said it's, the law is the way it is, and when we are voting on a part of our budget process, the number of members currently on the board does not affect the number that is required to pass, what is it called?
It's a good thing there's only three. We'd never pass a budget.
We need a supermajority, so when there's only four, supermajority's 66%, so you have to have all four. Just three is only enough. Because you count all five, even though you got to make it six.
Yeah, we're still a five-member board, even though we got one empty.
Yes. So.
Okay.
I need to be clear, because
Well, that's why I asked the question. I want, in my mind, to be clear.
Yep.
So whatever happens, I can go back and explain to my board, the process, so.
I try, try to be nice, but I understand the, the argument against, at the timing that we're at, and if we still feel that way by the time the budget is to be approved, then
Then you could pull it.
Yes.
I mean, it'd be an amazing thing if next year we have another 100 million in TIF releases with 300 million worth of growth, but, I mean, that was kind of like a miracle this year to happen with the 800,000 mandated costs in mental health, and, you know, we also had some other mandated costs or increases, you know, for autopsies and things that, you know, a kind of circumstantial cost on the sheriff's side, where they don't make four-wheel-drive Challengers anymore, so now we got to look at Durango's or trucks, or something else that's not as cheap. And, so, you know, when you add $14,000 per vehicle, and when they're buying eight vehicles a year, that's a big increase to swallow. I mean, there's a lot of things that happen, and they happen every year, but I'm not saying that I'd never support the position, I'm just saying that I don't feel like it's right this year.
See, and I would do the other way, since I think we were able to work out a way to do this and still lower the levy. I, I think this is the time to do it. And again, it takes four votes to pass our budget. And I'm in favor with this in it.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All second. Other discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Nay.
Passes two to one. Raddig opposed.
If you just need a supermajority, just have somebody calling, say, two-thirds, that's
Well, you guys take care of yourselves. Man, be chair, they said. It'll be fun, they said.
Careful what you ask for, what you wish for, you know?
Well, thank you, and thank you for your explanation. We understand it's a process, and we'll stay in touch.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Did we find out from the sheriff's department on the
They did not call.
Okay, okay.
This will be your high end, you can always go lower, with the public hearing.
Right.
Which will be March 31st. So the net result, after all these, what we've done today with addition, is countywide will down 1.6 cents, and the townships will go down 2.6 cents. So with that said, consensus of the board would say, I'd like to publish the maximum tax levy, that's a new hearing we have to have for the general fund, rural basic, March 10th, 4:45.
Todd, did you ever hear back on the, a better, did you ever hear back on a better quote for the vehicles, or?
Not yet.
Okay.
Still waiting.
No problem.
What date again?
March 10th, 4:45.
Okay.
In the afternoon. That's just simple hearing there. The big one will be March 31st.
Got it. So I hear no dissent to that date, so that's what we will go with. Other budget reviews, Dennis? Item C, is there anything else?
Nope, that kind of just, item C just would be what I gave you this time here. We're pretty much done.
Pat, can we receive the
Yes.
Okay. The minutes of the 2020 Compensation Board Meeting, held yesterday, are in front of you all, and very simple minutes. I was moved and seconded to recommend a salary increase of 2.75 for all elected officials, of course, matching wage plan and union negotiations. Maybe the simplest year of
I'll move to receive it.
Wage changes, recent memory. All second. Raddig's motion to receive. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes three zero.
Was this factored into the numbers you just gave us?
Yes.
Okay.
This was, and this will be voted on, on the 31st of March, with the
Correct. It'll be a separate hearing for the Compensation Board, then we'll have the, seeing the 350 cap, and then we'll have our regular hearing, so it'll be three hearings.
Very good.
Correct, Pat, on the compensation, yep.
Yep.
Timing-wise, if we have other budget reviews, which I don't anticipate, we will schedule those simply at the end of the board meeting that starts at 4:30.
Correct.
Sound good? Welcome, Joshua.
Hello.
Does anyone have anything else on the budget, questions on future meetings or dates? So we'll publish that.
Yep.
Very good. Now, by my watch, we're at 4:29, so Raddig, if you could tell a joke, will be at 4:30.
Why are you shaking your head no? Boy, that hurts.
I can say one thing.
Yeah.
Multi-year contracts are great, because now, when we come to budget each year, we know what the number we're dealing with. That'll be very, very helpful.
Again, with the segue, you didn't, segue, you're, you're talking about the union contracts.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Well, we already gavelled in, so we'll call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Please be seated. Item two on the agenda is citizen concerns. Are there any concerned citizens? Seeing none. Item three, I'll move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Second by Raddig. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes three zero. Items four through seven constitute a consent agenda of reaching action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item four is approval of the minutes of the February 4th, 2020 meeting. Item five is approval of the claims. Item six from human resources includes A, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions, and B, approval of the tentative agreement reached between Woodbury County and ASME representing three bargaining units. Dennis was just complimenting that the multi-year agreements are best. These are for four years, I believe, was very I believe, uh, was very successful as far as the negotiations and the relationship of the county with the unions. And item seven from the county auditor is consideration approval for liquor license for Foot Wedge Lounge. Odd name. That completes the consent agenda and I will move approval.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Hearing no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes three zero. Item eight from human resources, Director Melissa Thomas's approval to modify Woodbury County's vehicle comprehensive collision insurance.
Melissa Thomas, Human Resources Director. So basically, um, by taking the automobiles and the equipment out of the umbrella of the property side of our insurance and giving it its own policy, um, we are then also lowering the deductible from twenty-five to five thousand, um, which I think will save us, um, throughout the year. It's hard to tell how much exactly because we don't want any totaled vehicles.
So that on the vehicle, the deductible's dropping twenty thousand, so then-
Right, so this is really gonna help them out. Hopefully, we don't have to deal with it, but in case we would, it would save twenty thousand.
Well, it's gonna happen at some point, I mean, that's just the reality.
Right. And then any other, um, any other damage over five thousand, too, we'll save on.
Very good. This is one of the bits of good news I mentioned earlier. So all move approval.
Second.
Second by Raddick. Thank you for finding this and hearing no other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, once again, from the board, is an information item. It's a public forum for questions and discussions of the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center project, the March third public referendum, and the duties of the intergovernmental authority. I know that, uh, the auditor's office has sent out those, uh, notifications of the time and place of the vote. Um, I know that Supervisor Raddick has some more, uh, city council member sign letters for us to receive. Go ahead.
So yes, we went to, uh, we got six in here, six different cities. We were working hard. Uh, so Smithlin, Pearson, Lawton, Cushing, Hornick, Anthem. Uh, I've noticed something quite a bit different this last week as we've been going to more councils. When we get in the room, a lot of the people in the room already know all the information before we start. Um, it's made things a lot easier. Uh, you know, we keep repeating ourselves every time we're on the radio, every time we're discussing things publicly and word of mouth is getting around, um, that this is the decision that makes the most sense. Um, it will be the most, uh, beneficial to the tax levy itself overall because it's the only option that will have the potential to pay for itself. Uh, so people are understanding that. Uh, the last four councils we went, a hundred percent of the board members, uh, councils signed, including clerks, and people in the audience wanted to sign. So, uh, it was, it was quite a, uh, fun opportunity to be out in these different boards and councils and, uh, just having everybody in the room be on board with us. So, uh, I think we got some good momentum moving forward. Uh, so I, I'll move to receive these. Uh, give them here to the auditor.
All second. To clarify, those are, we're receiving how many?
I didn't, I guess I didn't count them.
Oh, this is more than just your meetings last night?
This is six different councils.
Okay, not previously received, then?
Not pre, and just, just from last Tuesday to today, we've met with six different councils.
Very good.
We've been, we've been to twelve out of fourteen, we're hitting the other two tonight.
So five-thirty Sergeant Bluff, seven o'clock Bronson, and we will have gone to every single city council in Woodbury County to let them know, uh, to inform them, to give them our phone number if they have any questions. Uh, citizens out there, if you have a question and you're, you know, not wanting to come into Sioux City, you can talk to your local council members. They've got the information and anything they don't know, they've got my number. You can get ahold of me.
On the motion to receive, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes three zero. Um, of course, echo all those sentiments. Uh, any thoughts from the board? Any updates from department heads on the jail? Director Kenny Schmitz.
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services, uh, just had a couple of quick things. Uh, had a meeting, uh, last Wednesday, uh, that included the, uh, judges, uh, Larry Goldberg and myself, the county attorney. Uh, it was a very good meeting. Um, everyone had a chance to get together. Um, the judges are very much in favor, uh, of a new justice center. And I say justice center in parentheses because they thought it important, uh, that we start referring to, uh, the possibility of a new facility as being a justice, justice center, um, just not, uh, a law enforcement center, um, as we may have in the past. Um, and just to get the message out that, uh, if, if we did, uh, approve a new facility in the future, that it would include, uh, the judges and, uh, offices for county attorney and others, um, in that facility that are important to, uh, uh, are conducive to, uh, the needs of Woodbury County. Um, also wanted to update you, a couple of weeks ago, I spoke about shower valves in the, in the current LEC and, uh, we thought we had identified, uh, the last vendor, uh, for some parts. And, uh, it has turned out that that vendor, uh, while they said they could get the parts, they have not produced those yet. Um, and it's not looking like they're going to be able to. Um, so these are, uh, just a valve kit, like, like changing a kit out inside the valves of your kitchen faucet only on a, on a commercial and, uh, larger scale. Um, i-if we continue to be, uh, unable to locate some, some kits to do, do repairs, we are going to have to replace valve bodies, um, which is a concern. Uh, these aren't something that's, that are easily replaced, so, um, just wanted to let you know that. Um, we did also have an issue, uh, actually about six weeks ago that I let you know about. Uh, we had a leak inside a, uh, shower that was draining water below, uh, that we thought was embedded in the concrete. We actually tore a ceiling out of a shower and found that problem. Uh, the piping was pa-paper thin, uh, which allowed us to, uh, look into the ceiling in the adjoining shower next to it, which had the same problem we weren't unaware of. So we're now going to be tearing out a second ceiling in another shower. Um, so providing update on that. Um, also, again, wanna try to educate the public in, in what we're doing, uh, so they understand the implications, uh, of their vote, uh, coming up on March third. And to let them know again that they can take a look at Woodbury County's website where we have, uh, a lot of information so they can understand the implications of that necessary vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that example you gave of the valves is just a, is a perfect example for the jail itself. When we're told, just repair it, we're approaching a point where we physically can't because we can't source the parts.
So you're saying we're not just spouting off?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, man.
I didn't set him up for that. I, I have no control over, over my vice chair.
He thought you'd get away without hearing one.
But really, it's a good, it's a good point to make is we can't do it. It's, it's becoming physically impossible to repair parts of the jail, so. Any other updates on the jail?
These are little parts.
Yes.
These parts would be much worse.
Yes, much worse and-
Well, the downside is we had budgeted fifty-five thousand for replacement of these valves throughout the jail. And if you can't get any parts, you have to replace the whole combi unit, which now you're talking bigger money. And this was never part of the identified twenty-two point five million in repairs that were necessary. So now we're looking at even bigger numbers. And we still gain no new capacity. We still have an old jail on bad soil, uh, an unsafe Sallyport. So let's get this thing passed and let's get this thing built and hopefully the jail can make it the, uh, you know, one year and nine months that it takes to get it built. So, uh, other things this week, uh, Wednesday, five-thirty PM, KSCJ, Drivetime, Sulan, uh, Ron Wick and I will be on there, so him from the authority and me from the board. Uh, Thursday, we have our Farm Bureau meeting. Did we have that posted right or we're going to post it?
I'm going.
I'm going.
You're going. So I don't believe we'll have it.
Rocky might be. He was gonna be back by then, right?
I, I don't know. We can post it.
Yeah, I think we better just post it.
He'll be back.
Uh, Friday, eight-thirty AM, our security meeting, uh, over at the LEC. And then, uh, we were just invited, I don't know if you'd gotten the email yet, but on the twenty-sixth, uh, at noon at the Sioux City Public Library, K, KWIT, K WIT was planning to do a live, uh, broadcast from there discussing, so that was-
The jail?
Yes.
On the name, I agree the justice center sounds better. And if we get to the point where we're starting on this project, then that authority can change its name that it already approved as the law enforcement center. So I think that's a-
It's a law enforcement center. I mean, it does, yeah, we do a lot more than just, it's not just a jail, you know, and we've been very adamant about that out in the public, but, uh, I mean, it's, it's a full-on law enforcement center.
Any other thoughts on the, uh, public forum here? Thoughts from the public? Number ten is reports on committee meetings.
None here. I didn't have anything either.
Had a Sulan District Health meeting, a good update from, um, Tyler Brock there-
No, I do, I do have an update, I'm sorry.
On, uh, coronavirus, so, uh, no more dangerous than the flu for us in the states at this point. So appreciate the, I've heard them out on the radio and, and updating the public on that, so it's a good part of the county infrastructure there.
So the one thing I forgot, workforce development board, that was last Thursday. Uh, so we were working on a twenty-four county development board region. Uh, some of the counties appealed the redistricting or re-regionalization of the state. They won their appeal. We're going back to about a five-county workforce development board region. Uh, the state is making it very difficult to, uh, maintain your independence. They wanna kinda take it over. Uh, but we would like to maintain our independence and part of that is you can no longer have your provider be the fiscal agent as well. Cherokee was originally going to look at being the fiscal agent. Uh, their auditor instead said that they feel they're too busy to do it. Uh, so I need to ask you and as a board if we would like to be the fiscal agent for our region. It would probably make the most sense. We are the largest county. Um, the claim is that it's relatively little work, but, uh-
Ask Dennis.
It's mostly probably for the auditor's office, I don't know.
I'm assuming there'll be revenues, expenditures, all of this, so we'll just sell-
Or mostly like a pass-through type situation, sounds like, um-
Yep. That's how probably a trust agency fund will be set up working with the auditor's office.
Pretty much the same thing you did before, right?
Yes.
So then I will let them know that that works for you guys. You love more work for no extra pay.
Right.
I think we probably charge them something. I, we might be able to get something back.
Let's bring this back for board approval, just in case there's other things that come up that-
Oh, and then, uh, next week I'll have the twenty-eighty on the agenda, so, uh-
For?
For the new, so the laws had changed in twenty-fourteen on workforce development boards and most, uh, I think all of them weren't necessarily following those new laws because they didn't know the process that they were supposed to follow. So, uh, we have to create a new twenty-eighty for our region. Uh, we're also gonna create new bylaws. I don't know that you, you guys have to approve the bylaws. I think I can as a member of that, uh, board. But the twenty-eighty obviously has to be agreed upon us as a board.
All right. Any other committee meeting reports? Item eleven, any citizen concerns?
Uh-oh. Concerned about that joke you heard.
Red Hayworth, I live in Mollville, Iowa. Concerns is there's a scourge in Woodbury County. Sometimes it's in Woodbury County, sometimes it's usually in the courthouse, but usually it's confined to about this space right here and it's puns gone amok in Woodbury County. So I'd, maybe something can be done at some future point, hopefully. Thank you.
Probably ask Kenny to put a buzzer in my seat.
Every, uh, organizational meeting after general election, Pat, we have to approve bylaws. We were just talking about bylaws, so, you know, we generally shy away from naming members in the bylaws, but, you know. Certainly, uh, look at that. Unless you wanna self-censor yourself.
At some point, maybe.
Oh, hearing, uh, no further puns, uh, item twelve, board concerns? Oh, here it is again. Another opportunity for me to speak. Okay. All right, thank you, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Six-thirty, we're going to the Farm Bureau office. Just in case Rocky does show up.
Yes, yes. Yep. Farm Bureau. I don't think I've ever done that before, so, so. I wanted to like sell it, like, but they have a really dire voice, so. The comp board, can I get a, the, this, I know it's very basic, it's just two point seven five. Yeah.
Don't sit down. I got it in their chair. I was such- Also, um, thanks, I cut up. It was like a long right here. That rope, uh, belonged to the picture, in the main building. We don't know, we gotta take it outside, yeah, for sure. The function, I never got the concrete there, we're gonna break up. The six-point slope we're gonna build, we'll build it. The key is that we can hold it, that's the key. So if we can generate enough money to build a new church, we'll fill funding. We're open now, we're, 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 we're established in six-five years. Some people don't make the money, obviously, they really want to see the club today. It's a public club. You know, we're saying, that's what they are.
A little bit of fuel.
We got all the vehicles, we can, we can make money. You saw our student, that didn't work. It's a shame. I did some of that, it would've been done.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, that's what I'm talking about. I mean, yeah. I'm just talking about, yeah. We're trying to, we're trying to secure. It's possible, we have, we have four cars. Right. Unless we'll be able to keep using that. You're the president, right? I'm the president.